Resolved to approve the land lease agreement and future conveyance between the town and Clinton and Shoreline Ice for approximately nine acres of land on a parcel of property located on Old Nod Road. The motion to approve.
Second?
Second item?
Second.
Alright, discussion? Yes, sir.
Willie, is there a clause in the contract that allows these individuals to purchase this land by September 30th, 2013 for $1,000, number one? And number two, is it known to be to contain, contend, or to...
There's a clause that allows conveyance of the property if they can get all the permits in place by September of 2013 and approvals in place to build a hockey rink, then the property will be conveyed to them.
For $1,000?
For $8,000. They have knowledge of everything that has ever been tested on that site, they have access to all that information prior to actually making this formal proposal to the town.
Who's responsible for the remediation if it's so needed on this property?
The developer for that nine acre piece.
And that's an open end. He can walk from the deal-
Yep.
-or remediate.
Yep. If it proves to be too costly for him, he can walk away.
He can walk.
Yep.
And the final purchase price is...
$1,000, conveyance of the property.
Well?
Yes, sir.
How did you arrive at such a low price of $1,000?
It's an incentive to get somebody to come in and do something with a piece of property that otherwise is worthless to the town. If they can figure out a way to make this a piece of property something that can be used viably, it'll stimulate economic development in town, which is something people are rallying about, the potential ran list wrote and possibly $90,000 of the impact, which we currently all see from this part.
Is there any possibility that something could go on and make it engage the town Clinton in a sole capacity?
No, the way the lease agreement and purchase is written up, the town is held, the landlord, which we will be in the beginning, is held harmless for anything on that site. We own the problem as it is anyway. By then taking this nine acre piece, that part becomes their problem if they're going to develop the site.
What's a total acre show?
Sixty acres.
And I saw they're buying nine of them.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Has the potential buyer been informed of the tests that have already been formed in that area over the last many years since the Old Nod site was closed?
They've gotten every book, every test that we've had, they had it all before they-
Every lab report?
Yep. Yep. I made sure they knew when we talked about them doing this, Mr. Dolan, I said, "Do you understand?" And Mr. DeFilippo's there and I can certainly, he can attest to that, I gave him every piece of information to look at that we had. Joe, did I not?
I have both the projects on my record. Has environmental council been consulted about how it actually works if it is to be determined that there is environmental to be remediated?
Yes, this was all done with our town council and environmental council. Their attorney, Greg Gallo.
Because my understanding is that if it is found that there is a remediation required, it is always the owner of the property that's responsible, or whoever was the initial polluter if it ever be determined.
With the Transfer Act, so incursing the property, having full knowledge of the potential contamination, then assumes responsibility for that contamination.
What determines what full knowledge is?
Given them everything we have, part of their due diligence is again to have to go in and do their own site investigation to determine if there's anything there that they cannot deal with. And Joe's got an environmental scientist here with him. If they dig into the ground and say, "You know, it's not worth it," then they just say, "Forget it." I already got one from Ben, Alan's in front.
Yeah, how does this kind of relate to the remediation of the total site? Because I know there is possibility within the state statutes for partial remediation of not, this is at the larger site, this is a portion of it. And to what, what will the standards for remediation give? Because there's a lot of variances that the state can grant for non-residential remediation. And the question is, will they actually deal with nearly what's required? There's two questions. Will they nearly deal with what's required to get the DEP approval to build the ice rink? Or will they remediate subsoil conditions which could be covered up, but which might affect the sort of bleach agent from the entire site?
That's something that they're gonna have to work out with the DEP.
Well, I think there's a question here is-
The town would never have to remediate subsurface conditions. The town's remediation process would simply be to have to cap that property. We would not have to remediate if we're not gonna use it for future use, as in any land whole site.
Except if it's seriously adversely affecting water.
Right. And at this point, there are some, there've been some odd hits, but those hits, Mr. Dolan can attest to, have been below the standards, although they found some stuff, but has been below the standards for drinking.
There's been chloroform found in one of the sites-
Right.
-that we're monitoring every three months.
Right. And it's, but it is within acceptable limits.
It's in acceptable current limits.
Yep. Full blown remediation regardless of who does, occupies it, probably never will be done. It'll be like Bostich.
Do you have a question I ask? How does this relate to the Board of Selectment? I don't understand the phrase and the language which says approve the use of purchase. I, you know, I don't know what you, I don't know what the Board of Selectment approved.
Will we approve the potential land lease and eventual conveyance of this property?
Nothing says that.
That's in our minutes.
It's not in your minutes.
That's what we approve.
I have a copy of those minutes. It is not in the minutes. That is, that is the language of the minutes and the approved minutes.
Will we approve this lease agreement?
Did you have the lease agreement?
Yes, they did.
That it gets voted on board of that lease agreement?
Anybody else? I guess somebody already went, Bill?
Yeah, 46 years ago, my father was in the trash hauling business and we used landfill. Probably a couple times a day we were up there. And there was a big industry in this town who used to dump 55 gallons of drums of industrial waste and petrochemicals in the landfill up there. There's a lot of stuff in there. That place used to be a valley, now it's a mountain. Are we gonna be on the hook, if they find something on those nine acres, are we gonna be on the hook to remediate the rest of the 60 acres?
No.
Because I know years ago, they discovered the wells on people's houses in that area were polluted with benzene. So we had to run-
Which has gone away. Which has gone away.
It's gone somewhere else.
There are no VOCs detected in any of those wells, Mr. Dolan, am I correct?
So the wells are, we provided them with city water.
No, we didn't.
Now we're, now we're getting coliform or whatever it is in there.
Which is not, coliform is not a byproduct of the landfill. That's where they don't understand where this is coming from. It's not something-
I just think you're opening a big can of worms if you start digging up there.
That's, again, for the nine acre site, that's gonna be their responsibility. We're not eligible for brownfield remediation money anymore, the town's municipal is not giving that money, it's given to developers, the ones that take the site like this and develop it. They have the opportunity to get money from the feds and the state to remediate the-
So if they find something on the nine acres, would they assume that there's more on the other, the balance of the 60 acres?
We don't know that.
Well...
...92 Central Road, developing, from everything I heard tonight, it would be invested just for the town to have private developer, take it over to bring in something, $4,000 there.
Attempt to.
Attempt to, and to save the town money down the road, where the town later on have a good clean property, private developer, will take the cost of this, which will save the town money, bring jobs into the community, and I think this is something that we need to help stimulate the economic development. They need to bring people into the town, will help out, be in the, we're seasonal tourism, town, anything that would add to this and bring money around to this.
I want to get in, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on the Board of Finance, 42 Soul's by the way. I just recently noticed that when the Board of Finance was given this at very last minute, there were no attachments when we voted on it. Attachment A and B, which is part of this lease, were not provided to us. Question about the soccer and lacrosse fields that they can build on that land.
If they don't need the area for parking, that's what it says in the lease agreement. Correct. If they don't need it for the building or for parking.
Right. Which concerns me a lot more about potential fumes pollution, whatever, when kids are playing on brown that-
And it specifically says in the lease agreement that if it meets the standards required in order to build those fields.
So this is a lease purchase?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Another question, can they sublet? It's not addressed in here. What if, what if they decide that-
It does say here they cannot, they cannot sublet. It has to be run by Shoreline Ice Incorporated.
Well, what if Shoreline Ice Incorporated decides to go into the shooting range business or some other business? I mean, they could, and any business can branch off and decide that ice rinks isn't popular or unprofitable, it's something else. But is it addressed specifically?
If it's a change of use, they have to come back to zoning.
Okay. The third question is their insurance policy. This landly says that they have, that we as the landlords, from time to time, will ask them for additional, to make sure that they have the money and their policies are up to date, considering that this is a polluted site. It's an important issue. I wondered if that could be firmed up instead of saying from time to time, to an exact amount of time? Every three months, every month, every 30 days, every six months? It's kind of broad strung.
Once the town is named additionally insured, and any, with any policy, if the policy lapses, the town is immediately notified by the agent that the policy has lapsed, just like if you don't pay your car insurance, your bank's gonna, if you have a loan, the bank's gonna know that you didn't pay your car insurance and it's expired.
And who, who were the attorneys that worked on this? The landlies?
John Bennett and Greg Gallo represent Shoreline Ice.
And John Bennett is confident that this indemnifies us from-
There's several, several paragraphs and there's several places where it says, "Ten and its agent are held harmless."
It's as good as ink on paper.
Everything is, to this day, unfortunately.
Mr. Chris, yeah. First I know, I'm all for economic development. Ice rink sounds wonderful, I have no problem with that. But I am, I do have a problem with the process. This whole thing seems to be kept very close to the vest, there wasn't much information around. I understand it was given the planning and zoning in the Board of Finance within hours of the meeting where they were asked to approve this. So, in my mind, it raises suspicions. We've had problems before with land swaps, most recently causing a downstream effect that ended up in a scandal, if you want to put it that way, on planning and zoning. I just get suspicious of things that are not given proper public scrutiny. So I'm not against the idea, certainly not against the vote, I'm all for it, but I'm very concerned that we seem to, don't worry about process in town, we don't seem to worry about the charter sometimes. It just seems that when there's not proper public scrutiny, I have to ask why. You know, was this property advertised? All these questions, you know? And because it's polluted, maybe $1,000 is a, is a good price, but it certainly begs the question, I'd like to buy nine acres for, for $1,000. Why not this nine acre? But I, I have to, not knowing the environmental, I have to wonder, you know, as it sits now, I guess we're not really spending any money on it other than to monitor it. But if it all gets dug up and all of a sudden discover things, it's leaching into the water table-
They know it's there.
Are there, I, I wanna make sure, we're not then gonna be on the hook for the remediation?
We're always gonna be on the hook for remediation of the whole property if they don't do anything with nine acres. We're on the hook for 60 acres regardless of the rest.
Correct. Forever and a day.
It's just a matter of when our hand is forced. They know what's there. There's been extensive pesting done on that site a long time ago. They know what's there. That's, that's not-
Well, I'm applying to-
Well, here's the thing, I don't know why, you know, I don't know why the Board of Finance, they got it when they got it. This was done at the May 16 meeting that we have, the Board of Selectmen doesn't anything, it's gonna be on the Board of Finance jet and it gets sent out. Where the Board of Finance members read their email, like a gentleman's check for words, "I don't have that control." It was sent to the zoning board on May 22nd, the 814 letter with the lease agreement, with the field cards, et cetera, for June, I think it was a June 6 meeting. So it was plenty, plenty of, plenty of time and ground. I can't control when the clerks or whatever, the board is distributing the information. It wasn't done three hours before the meeting, as I've been heard, so.
Really, I beg to differ. I was in the town hall, 1 o'clock that day of our Board of Finance meeting, I emptied my file, I made a special trip to talk to Mary, who is our secretary, asking her if there was anything else that was going in the file that would be on the meeting tonight. She told me no. So I did not come back until 3 or 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Soon as the Board of Selectmen does anything, it's gonna be on the Board of Finance jet and it's supposed to get sent out.
It was not in my file at 1 o'clock and I was told nothing else.
And I have the date right here on when I sent it to the zoning board.
Alright, I'm just telling you practically, we did not, it was not in our hands and there was no email sent to us, we need to come back to the town hall and pick up information. And you handed us an 11-page document that you asked us to vote on in-
I haven't handed it in.
It was distributed. Thank you, Willie.
Jamie Lex, 18th Avenue. I grew up on 100 Village Lane, and I'm well aware of what this property's potential can be. And I totally congratulate the family to come along and represent something that could most definitely bring huge prosperous things to happen. And I also wanted to mention that what this gentleman over here asked about it being in the proper timeframe, I believe that they did do what they had to do, and I think it was got overshadowed by all the other things that people just get too wrapped up in. So I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Meg Lyte, Commerce Street. I've been skating my entire life. I've traveled to every rink in Connecticut. My son was a hockey player. So I can tell you firsthand that the demand for ice is very, very high, that I don't see any potential with it ever being, not being used. And the amount of money that we spent in the towns that I went to visit was a lot of money. And I know that hockey families and figure skating families are devoted, and this is nothing but the best news that I could have heard that's gonna happen to come through. So I am all for it.
Has anybody else expressed interest in the property?
No.
Is there any other use for that property right now?
No.
Okay. I echo what this woman said, I've played hockey my entire life. Hockey is very, ice time is very rare. I would love to drive five minutes to play instead of 30 minutes to Milford, North Branford, and Norwich. This is the best.
We said, mega for mega, Mr. Dolan. We tried it 2007, remember?
Yes, yes.
Then the economy had got, had a full bump and the economy would stop.
And, and back then, we had, I immediately contacted the athletic director from the Madison Public School, and he sent me within two days, a letter of commitment and agreement to rent our ice. The feasible studies were done years ago, and the amount, the amount of towns that we utilize our rent is, I'm a hockey mom, and I'm knee deep in it, I have a 10-year-old, I have three boys. And the money we spend on gas just alone, and it would be privately owned, which it would, it's just a great thing.
Yeah, I'm, I just have some points of information that I'm very, is the lease, I'm kind of looking at the state, land lease for future conveyance between the town, is a lease for a period of one year?
September 2013, at least to September 2013 for a lot. And at that time, they have to, they have to do their due diligence and line it up.
And then after, okay, this lease is for this nine acres only? And they're not, they can't do anything with this property until they've gone to planning and zoning?
They have all the permits and approvals.
Okay. Now, the issues with, I mean, obviously there can be issues as to when we would go in to the property.
There are no other easements across that property as part of this, they're strictly off of Old Nod.
Okay. So it would be off of Nod, is there another area of Nod that's part of that property?
This property, entirety of the property, 60 acres of the property, which is in three different blocks. There's access from East Shore, there's access from Nod, and there's access for Public Works. This is strictly a piece off Old Nod, no other access, rent, any other way to place on that property.
So it would have to go through the area of Nod that's under the town?
No, 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 the whole Nod.
Whole Nod.
Over the highway, take a right and up down.
Okay.
Which back in the day when the dump was running, there were probably a lot more cars and trucks going in and out of there than would be from a hockey.
Willie, Willie, could you, could you say that again about the easements or-
There were no easements across any of, any of the other property.
I thought that this lease included an easement over, over to East Shore Road.
I was asked if there was any other access to the property because I thought they were asking if this was gonna landlock the rest of the town property. I said there is access to the town property from East Shore and from Old, and from Nod Road. Answer was up DPW.
To the town property.
There are no easements through any other roads or any other pieces.
But this lease does not cite an easement from the hockey rink area to East Shore Road?
No.
Alright, well, another question I heard brought up at, at the planning committee the other night was, who is going to, I mean, this is gonna add a lot of wear and tear or a lot of traffic to roads that are essentially paved cow paths, and that will put a burden on Public Works and on the town. Will there be any provision for bringing the roads to heavily trafficked?
The zoning board can ask for improvements on the roads for the traffic conditions based on the potential flow of traffic by the developer.
Willie, there's a case that says the town cannot impose that program on the developer.
You can ask, you can ask. And if they're friendly, they put that-
Well, asking and doing are two different things. If the traffic warrants the use of the road to be greater, we can't just impose that as a planning agency on the developer because there is case law that prohibits it. So asking doesn't mean anything.
And just, just for the record, Willie, the Board of Selectmen, I did not receive a copy of that lease before the meeting. I thought that we were voting on an idea, on a concept, and I voted to have this concept move forward to the appropriate approval agencies. I have, the first I saw of the written lease was tonight. I never got a copy of that lease, I never got an email of that lease.
Everyone should have had the lease, Carol.
I did not get that lease.
I walked off the lease at the meeting.
I know you did, but I don't know what I don't have if nobody gives it to me, and I never received a copy of the lease.
I think everyone was distributing a copy.
Well, it wasn't, because I didn't get-
Yeah, my name is Joe Fluff, I'm a developer. I live in town, I actually live on Young Road, which is only like a half, not even half mile from the site. That road was, used to be a quarry on that road, built this year ago, 10 years ago. That road was heavily traveled with by accident, with truck trailers. That road was more insufficient.
Not the part you're looking at.
It's a small town, it's a little bit more on the road.
Can I also second something, just living in that area, it's not Cow Path Road, I walk every single day with my son. It's perfectly paved.
I said a Cow Path, Cow Path Road that originally was access to farm and then gradually becomes a road over time.
Here's the thing, Willie, we approved the nine acres and that's an accessible site, there's a good possibility other developers want to come in and maybe improve the other remaining acres for future development.
Just for clarity, what we hold tonight on this issue, we're not, are we not, are we going for just the one-year lease or the sale following the lease?
If the, if the, if the, if the can be built, if the law proves it can be built, gets all his permits with the clues approvals, then we would convey the property if the law would make it.
But on any more town meetings, that's not what I'm hoping for. Just so everyone knows, this is the final vote, not just the lease, but-
Well, it's the final vote at the town meeting, it still has to go, all the other agencies involved for approvals.
I understand that.
Okay, a couple more.
Well, since Seattle came to Seattle, we just have one question, we have to think, this is a political, you know, which are experiences with soil contamination and remediation? I have an environmental engineer, I'm a developer, I'm a builder, I'm an estimating contractor. So I hired a professional team of experts to take, to do this testing. I'm not an engineer, that's why I hired New Vista Real Pain here, an environmentalist, and that's, that's my team. Have you ever had any experience with contaminated soil and remediation?
No. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm mostly confused about planning and zoning. Have they approved the plan? Have they approved the concept? Because I've heard two different things from you.
There is no plan. This is to allow the developer to go forward and develop the plans.
So what did planning and zoning-
The 8-24, which allows the transfer of property at this point, the lease agreement. The 8-24, which allows the lease agreement and the potential transfer of the property. They still have to come back to P&amp;Z with a site plan for approval and everything else that it goes without, as any developer would have to go for, for any type of project at town, which they could be denied.
Essentially, they've approved nothing, is that-
Essentially, no, no. And this is up to them to do their due diligence and get everything approved. If they can't get it approved, all deals are off and it's, it's, there's nothing happening. Alan, go ahead.
Should we go through Public Works? Because Old Nod is a smaller road, if you run over some Public Works, it's a bigger road, it'd be a lot easier for people to find.
If there's something that comes up through the process that they may need to get an easement through another piece of the property, they're gonna have to go through the same process. An easement requires going through Selectmen, Finance, zoning, town meetings, any additional easements that would be needed if they find that, that it's not sufficient. That's not-
I think the voting public should be aware that this use is not a use that's permitted outright in that zone. It's only permitted by a special exception to the zoning. And the special exception has to meet a wide range of conditions, including, the first condition is that it doesn't have an adverse effect on the surrounding area, which I think is an issue, given the fact that the illustrative plan that we were given as, as an attachment, I mean, it's a document, it's a formal document, it's an attachment to the lease agreement, shows a parking lot for some 200 cars. That is a residential area that is a polluted site. Something's gotta happen to the runoff from 200 cars on that site. So that, this requires a special exemption. Also, the illustrative site plan, if you will, drag me back. The illustrative site plan suggests the building of 60,000 square feet. The zoning does not permit a 60,000 square foot building, it permits a 40,000 square foot building. Also, the contiguous zoning is residential. The zoning requires a 100-foot buffer between any structure in the industrial zone and the residential zones appropriate. That brings it virtually impossible to build a building in the location where it's shown on the site plan.
Which is why they have to do their-
And also, soccer and outdoor recreation, soccer and lacrosse field are specifically excluded from that zone. You cannot, under the existing zoning, build that on that site. So, you know, the, the town is actually encouraged by this action. A, a, a project which does not really fit under our zoning. It requires a number of special, it requires a special exception and will probably require two or more variants.
A couple more, thank you.
Kathy Mather, Liberty. I think Kathy, if having an ice rink is a great idea, my only concern is, is about the remediation, especially if soccer and lacrosse field were allowed, because at least with the ice rink, it's a project, you know, with recreations indoors. I just wanna know, what agency or who would make sure that remediation where there might be lacrosse and soccer fields had really been properly remediated so that they were safe, whether it's for kids or adults to be-
They're gonna have to deal with the state. They're gonna have to deal with DEP and State Department of Public Health, right? And stuff. It's not gonna be, that's gonna be outside of local jurisdiction, so.
Does the, the, the city make, make sure that it's properly remediated?
They're gonna have to hire an environmental firm.
Don't make a dollar be, you know.
Just, yeah, just like we do for any town project, we do the-
That's, that's the concern.
No more.
Multiple questions?
Oh, so, what happened? She's been asking.
Susan Barr, 105 Old Nod Road. I'll be directly affected by that rink. I still think it's a wonderful idea. My own concern as a resident of that road would be the amount of traffic coming through. It's a very windy road, very narrow road, very dark road, very dangerous. I, you know, on lovely evenings, I won't walk my dog past twilight because it's dangerous. A lot of new young families have moved into my neighborhood, they walk with their strollers and their children. If they could manage an easement or get an entryway from Nod Road, that would easily handle all that traffic. I'm all for it. But that's my main concern. And who would be responsible, the town, for traffic flow on Old Nod Road?
The local traffic commission. The local traffic commission.
Would there be lights that would have-
They're going to have to do a traffic study. They're going to have to do all that part of the process related to the poll.
And that, the cost of selling nine acres at $1,000, could private resident purchase the entire 60 acres for the same rate at $6,666, $6,666?
Unless you're going to handle it with environmental.
No, I would donate it to the Hudson Land Trust. Just let that go down.
They want it.
No?
Not when it's under the ground?
All right.
All right. Steve, one more and then we're going to-
Obviously, this is a hypothetical question. First of all, yes, I'm in favor of anything that helps with athletics, athletic activity, certainly as far as economic development within the town. However, and you knew that was coming. Let's say they do all their due diligence, they find out they can't afford to do the remediation on those nine acres, and they opt to walk away. Can the state or feds at that point force us to do the remediation then?
They can force us tomorrow.
No, no, that I understand. But by, by doing this, do we open up that can of worms needlessly?
I don't believe so, because it was declared a super fun site years ago. We're way down the list as far as super fun. We're 700 on the super fun site. They've only cleaned up 100 sites so far, and this has been since the age. I don't think it's going to be coming anytime soon. Yesterday's-
If we find a significant harm in that, it's going to be done.
That's only after we've done.
So they're already in the red.
Right.
As you said earlier.
Oh, you already had one. One more, Tom.
I have, I have no problem with the developer, as long as everything goes to its purpose. But is this, for you, and this is nothing to do with you personally, I'm going to develop it. Does he have the financial wherewithal to start this project? Has he ever owned and operated a H8 rink and bringing in outside management company?
Outside management company would be company.
So, are they be part of the lease? Are they going to be your management company that has to be, should be on the lease?
All right, Shoreline Ice.
Shoreline is a higher, just a manager's new facility, a four-minute slot there.
All right. So they have the experience?
They have the experience, they're, well, they have a great team of people that have played out there.
All right. I'm going to move the question here. All right. If I show my hands, all in favor, please, if I show my hand.
Would you, would you, I don't want to make a mistake. I can't see it.
Guys, do be patient, please. Keep, keep reading your hands, guys. Sorry.
Are they thinking they're at school?
Why, why is the janitor counting heads? Is he authorized to count heads? Moshe Carey's 46, very cool.